This conference will now be recorded.
Randy can hear us now?
We can't hear you. I can see that you're talking.
Then I can't hear him either.
Yeah, we can hear Jackie can hear us, Brandon can hear us, and another lady was on earlier to hear us as well, so.
Can you hear me Bruce? This is Brandon.
You got me, yeah perfectly.
Yes, I can hear.
We'll call a meeting to order. Everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we've got two of the commissioners joining us on Zoom today. So first order is to approve the agenda.
No changes.
No changes Bruce?
We approve the agenda.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Do we have any conflicts?
I see Randy's not on, Mr. Chairman, but I'm unaware that he would have any conflicts and any planning. It's only matters.
Okay.
Subject to change, I suppose.
Approval of the minutes from February fourteenth.
Approval, great job. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Absolutely great job as usual Brenda.
We've been better than last time.
Yeah, we just. Now we're you work this time.
Mr. Johnson, are you satisfied?
So sorry.
Hey Greg.
Do we have any travel requests Brenda?
Yes, I have.
I think it's. I think it's working now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you Randy.
Okay, I got it Greg.
Okay, so I have a travel request for Megan Merwin and Ms. Shane Carr to go to the 48th Annual International Training Conference in San Antonio, Texas from April fifteenth through the twenty first.
But I see it's going to be reversed.
I'm not sure yet.
Okay, what's your pleasure on that travel request gentlemen?
I'll move to approve the travel request. It's like I presented.
Second, okay, a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Personnel Brenda.
Um, I have a step raise for Jamie Olsen going to a E nine one coordinator step three base pay at twenty seven seventy seven effective two twenty six of twenty three.
Move approval. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I have a step raise for Robert Giddy going to a correction officer two grade two base pay at twenty three dollars effective two twenty six of twenty three.
Move to approve. Second, motion and a second for approval. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Would you like to do all three of the separate who go at the same time?
Sure.
Okay, I have Laura Lee Frey, Krista Purvis, and Reagan Matson. One is a correction officer two grade three twenty three forty six effective February twenty sixth. Krista's is correction officer one grade three twenty two oh nine effective two twenty sixth. And Reagan Matson is a dispatcher two grade two twenty three dollars an hour effective two twenty eighth.
I'll move to approve. Second, okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
We have a new hire Travis Love, correction officer one grade one base pay at twenty one twenty three effective March sixth.
Approve approval. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Last new hire is a deputy two grade three base pay of twenty nine ninety eight effective April fifth of twenty twenty three. And then also a cell phone per diem for him effective on the same date for a hundred and four dollars per month.
We have questions, some questions on him, but Brian answered the questions, so I'm approved.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Then also Brandon Rosenau is now back from the academy and will need a cell phone stipend effective February twenty eighth of twenty three, also for a hundred and four dollars per month.
Approve approval. Okay, I'll second it. A motion second for approval of the cell phone stipend. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Tim, I just have one other, just wondering if you want me to bring forth the Juneteenth holiday as a consideration. If we do that, it has to be a resolution, so just wondering if it's something you want me to bring back for an additional holiday.
We didn't support it last year.
No, they was asked to bring it for at the beginning of the year, so I was just asking if you want me to bring it or put it on the agenda going forward under personnel.
It should probably be discussed.
Okay.
Okay.
I will, Bruce and I will bring it at the next meeting.
Okay, we have some interest, so.
Thanks.
I need to go back and pick up the bills. Somehow I was missing. What's your pleasure on the bills?
Move to approve the bills, write checks.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay, national opioid settlement agreements.
All right, um, we just received some more documentation for the settlements that we signed on with through the Attorney General's office. And this is for, there's five additional companies that are part of this settlement, and if it's something you choose to do, I just need approval to authorize me to electronically sign Bob's name on these agreements.
Tell me a little more about it.
Well, we received just a little over twenty four thousand dollars for the opioid, the national opioid settlement, and that money has to be used for specific specific item purposes. I know Bruce has reached out to a couple organizations to see if they would have any needs that would meet the qualifications for that, and he at this time has not heard back from them, but this money would strictly be for that. It's nothing that we can put in the general fund. It would be basically kind of like teen court when we do the teen court, they bring the money back, we supplement it into teen court budget, and they use it for for that need. So this would be kind of similar to that, you know, so.
So for example, Richard, we're trying to see if drug court, local four circuit drug court can use it, because I think it has to be sort of opioid treatment and 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 sort of counseling and that kind of thing. So it's a fairly limited scope on how the money can be spent.
By signing on, we're under no obligation cost.
No, they just, they they send us the money, I receive it in, and then I turn around and, you know, otherwise it it has to be used for this purpose. It can't be used to anything else.
Bruce.
Brenda does have to account for it though, right? And so I don't know what happens if if we go agree to time and we we don't have anywhere to legitimately spend it. If we have to return it, or or we just keep carrying it for for whatever, but yeah, we're we're trying to spend it on on obviously legitimate purpose.
Well, I certainly think one of those programs would be able to use it.
Yep, and and so I I've asked a coordinator for for drug court to reach out to her contemporaries across the state, all the other drug court programs to see and the state coordinator to see if it's being used. I suspect if it hasn't been, it will be when they become aware of those spots.
Okay. So what's your pleasure other gentlemen?
I move to to sign on to the agreement.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Amended order declaring Mathis Homeowners Road District Incorporated. Sounds like we had a legal correction.
Yes, we did. I needed to amend this order declaring the Mathis Homeowners Road District Incorporated. When we transferred the legal onto the order, it's underlined, we just forgot to add the tract. And so we are correcting that so we can get it filed in the register of deeds.
I believe you didn't catch that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be abstaining from this.
Okay.
I move to approve the corrected and amended.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Randy's abstaining. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Reminder of county commissioner spring workshop registration. I will let Ken Bruce.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, presently I think I have you and Commissioner Flanagan interested in attending. If anybody could let me know so that I can present it for payment at your next meeting in March, so then we can cut checks and repay them in advance. Registration isn't due until April, but come into situations before we're 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 two weeks out, right, in terms of authorizing payment.
So are any of you other gentlemen interested in attending?
It's in here.
I don't know if I will or not. I'll have to see. We got killed first March. You gotta let them know when, did you say Bruce?
Well, I'd I'd like to know as soon as possible, so that at your next meeting on March fourteenth, if you're interested, then I can let Mel know the Wednesday before that meeting so that she can be prepared to cut a check. So on on March fourteenth, we would approve payment of that as a bill, and and then we're ready to go. Make sense?
Let you know before.
Thank you.
I'm struggling with the fact that I have to start counting.
Okay. I guess we're finished up. Sheriff Dean, we're ready for you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Personally, I'd like to make mention of significant items that sometimes go a little bit unnoticed, which was a little unfortunate as well. Last Friday, I had the privilege of attending the last or most recent law enforcement graduation ceremony where we had two of our folks, Brandon Rosenau, whose story we're all aware of, that Marina Cleveland graduated from the law enforcement academy there here. Brandon's story is quite significant, and what he went through is amazing, and we're aware of that, but what is quite a testament to his character is he received an award for leadership at the academy. What was especially favorable for Lawrence County was that so did his partner Marina Cleveland. Brandon was the class leader, and Marina was the assistant class student. So in addition to receiving awards from, an award from their their fellow recruits, they were recognized for that regard. And then, if you were not aware, the academy offers an award that's called the Cora Williams Award. It's an award that is the highest honored law enforcement officer of that class. Cora Williams is named after two FBI agents that were killed in the land of good in South Dakota many years ago. Marina Cleveland won the Cora Williams Award, so that's quite an honor for them. It's quite an honor for Lawrence County.
Oh, very much so. Tell them congratulations.
I will.
Very good.
I have before you the Western South Dakota Juvenile Services Center contract. And I request, Mr. Chairman, that the board offer their approval for me to sign that on behalf of Lawrence County. And also there's a couple of corrections that need to be made. They have not updated the primary member, which is historically been a member of this commission, and I serve as the alternate, so I don't I don't know whether the board had appointed this.
Um, I can't remember either now who it is. I could check.
Brandon was on it.
I think it was me. I think.
Yeah.
I can double check easily.
It's like in the red book. And if I may, I think we got around nine thousand dollars back from him this past December. You can either have to pay more in or get some back. We have a lot of money back sometimes.
Sheriff, it's you and I.
Okay, I, this is what I show for the rebate.
Rebate, oh.
Thirty three thousand.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we need a motion and a for the signatures, is that what we're?
Mr. Chairman, this agreement has only signature block by the sheriff's. I think the authorization would be to authorize the sheriff to sign it on your behalf.
Correct.
And then when we have a corrected copy of the agreement, we can get one of those to clarify upstairs up there.
Okay, I'll move. We proceed in that way. I'll second it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Going to get a corrected copy of that one.
Thanks Brian.
In terms of the Public Safety and Services Center update, things are proceeding along. Obviously, I had a slowdown last week with the mother. They they do have, I believe, they through the number ninety or ninety three percent of deployments are done, all of section C, all of section A, and a portion of section B. That's good news. The work will continue up there. We want to advise the board that our board committee, our committee continues to meet and discuss issues as they come up. We will soon begin the process of making purchases for soft cost type items. So those purchases will be of a significant dollar amount. They're all planned, identified. And just to give you some kind of a an explanation as to what we're waiting for, we're literally waiting for the building to start growing out of the ground. I'm told by our architect that some of the more concerning costs can arise before the building actually starts to come out of the ground, because of all the things that go into that prep work. And so we have, as you know, as part of our part of our cost is a construction contingency that remains in effect. It's a solid amount of money that everybody's comfortable for. But once the building starts to actually grow out of the ground, then we'll be looking to make some of those soft cost purchases. That's still quite early in the process, and just so that you understand why we would need to do that so soon, some of these pieces of equipment are of a technical nature, and as we've seen ever since COVID, some of those items take fourteen months to get them once you order them. So we don't want to be behind the mark. We want to be right on time.
Okay.
We're ready.
Bruce.
Chairman, Sheriff, I think the only thing that we sort of have gotten so far for a project is the free, not free totally, but the the office units, right, from from the state. There was costs associated with sort of storage and moving them, but otherwise, yeah, we were just talking about that earlier.
Correct.
Did you have your hand up Brendan? Okay.
That's what I have.
All right, well, thank you very much.
John is out in the hallway. I think we're bid opening, so we can't really get started.
All right, we'll take a quick break because we do have the bid openings first part.
Hello.
We're going to take a quick little break John because of the bid opening and
Yep.
We're actually ahead of schedule today.
That's true.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, why don't we do some of the approach permits and get them out of the way?
We just have the one.
Right now.
Well, I kind of already turned everybody loose. So Randy, go to the restroom.
I'll leave it to your great discretion.
I can double check.
I'll leave it to your great discretion.
I didn't allow people to take a break.
So we have the date on it.
Nice, nice talk, Randy. And here we go. Seven minutes. So don't abuse it. Was that one three thirty?
Yeah.
Made it, made it. Ten minutes to spare.
You've proved that nice job on the snow.
Yeah, yeah, we had a lot of snow, way more, you know, it came a little, little at a time, but you handled it well. The guys did a great job.
Was it a lot deeper up in the higher hills?
Yeah, yeah, we got every bit of a foot and a half.
Foot and a half.
Oh, you didn't get that much? Yeah, I didn't even think we were getting that much, and then all of a sudden, boom, there it was. Anywhere from twelve feet.
We didn't have near that much down here.
Well, that's, that was a good place for it there. We get the accumulation up hills.
Right.
But there's several feet before that. That's old snow, dude.
There is a lot of snow, yeah. Are you in Florida, Brandon?
I was in North Carolina, South Carolina or something.
Yes, yeah, I'm down here. Sorry, I'm talking with Commissioner Diver. Need some rural fire protection district members. You guys have any ideas for them?
Who's on there now? Same ones as when it started?
No, we had to turn over because we got terminated. I'm trying to think. So Chuck Nichols is still on there, Pat Kellogg, Leish Monk, and Dennis Forgy, I think they're both terminated.
This is very fish.
Yeah, yeah, it's very fresh world.
You're off too?
I am. I don't know that I can stay off. It seems, we had some people that were coming on that are now resigning just from from personal issue. It's kind of hard to drum my jitters in that because nothing is happening.
That's why I was going to ask.
It's just under his control, but you still have to be mindful of the budget and create the budget. There's still a couple of things to do.
Where do you meet?
Yeah, we've been meeting at you.
How long?
Quarter, quarter minutes. I'm going to do it four minutes. It's not hard to do.
We'll share.
You don't have a rural address though, do you? We'll see if you're on the voter list, not right now. Yeah, you might not be on the voter list.
Okay.
What are the dates that you need that first Monday or?
Uh, it's the first Tuesday of December, roughly March. We can fluctuate some on that, September and December.
I could be on there to have notice of it to start with.
Yeah, we don't. The annual meeting is March fourteenth. So we just would need to show up and to be elected there.
Well, I've got the pheromone in egg, but I'm not currently living there.
Yeah, well, Robin's printing off the voter list. You can vote yourself up and see if you're in there. Robin is printing off the voter list right now.
For what? For the square, he won't be in there.
What time is it?
He's registered. Well, but inside the city limits, then.
No.
No.
We're outside.
Yeah.
And then contract. That's a part of it, yeah, probably, right?
Sounds heavier.
I don't know, it's at the VFW in Scurfish.
It's that first weekend in March, first Tuesday in March.
Well, that, the annual meeting is March fourteenth. You're going to the county commission.
Well, we'll wait till Brandon gets back and replaces that bottle on the screen and then, oh, there he is.
Place holder.
We still got four minutes before we can officially open them.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one. Give you an update on the Deer Mountain situation. They they did provide draft copies of what their intended bonding is going to look like, but of course they haven't awarded any bid yet, and they've agreed that they're going to provide the five thousand dollar surety that that is the ordinance, so that if they did that promptly after your last meeting, so as far as I know, all that's on track.
Okay, so we don't know what their bond is going to be for the project.
Well, we don't know who's going to get it because they haven't awarded the project yet, the contractors, right? So they've given me, I think, models of what they require. And then, yeah, and and then your five thousand dollar requirement, they had no problem with that.
Sure.
Yeah. We sent them a model that Brenda had of of what I think was Blackwell's Power, somebody keeps on file here, and that they roll over. And John and I have been looking at some examples across the state of updating our forms and systems as well. Some of them can be quite elaborate.
Yes, many ahah accounting ones.
It's thirty pages.
Own book.
Yeah, yeah, right. We probably don't need to be quite that ambitious, but that was probably the high mark and.
I did actually brought up a, for one of our permits to occupy today, I actually have a clarification that I talked to the gentleman at MDU about. I want to add this. If you approve it, I'd like to add this to that. It's not changing our ordinance by any means. It's a clarification of the dimensions on our ordinance. It seems to be a real issue with everybody. We have that five foot minimum to the edge of the road, and then everybody always goes right to the five foot minimum. And I don't know why they would do that, but they do. It seems a real problem.
What was the documents that you shared with me yesterday afternoon?
Those are actually for the peaceful pines people.
Okay.
So I asked for a stipulation on one of their 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 board job. They're just, and I'll talk about that.
So I put that, I sent an email out to that effect last night, and then there were hard copies on your on your table today, so. And I think if you're looking at the drive, I have it under amended, I think, documents under highway.
Well, if they go go right up to the five foot level where we just well deny the question, tell somebody not to do it, then that would affect them all.
Right.
They would get that fine. Do something. That's a problem.
Well, it just seems like, you know, every time we do one of these jobs, it seems like everybody goes to that minimum distance. I guess it's easier. Other places that they can go further off the road, they never go further. It's a real problem if we're going to do any future expansion, or if we got to do any drainage issues, and it's always some sort of problem.
Well, I mentioned that. We just wrong hit the button.
For sure. And I know, like I say, this isn't going to be a, you know, it's not a part of our ordinance. It's just a clarification. It's in our ordinance.
Mr. Bay?
Yes.
Would it, would it be easier to put like a ten or a twelve foot minimum unless specifically waived in the ordinance? Put, put the ideal, then have to have a positive change to make it less?
Uh, yeah, I think a different measurement or is or no measurement would almost be probably better, and then leave them.
Determined by the highway superintendent?
Correct.
I would bet.
What I put here is, you know, what I wrote here is the approval upon the condition that the depth is no less than thirty six inches, the full length of the excavation, and the depth is closely monitored. The location of the excavation.
and the depth is closely monitored, the location of the excavation is as far as possible away from the edge of the road. This is to protect your utility from future disturbances such as drainage repairs or road surface expansion, the thirty six inch depth and five foot clearance measurements in our current ordinance is only a minimum and should only be allowed if there's proof that the maximum depth and clearance is not possible. And again, I'm, this isn't, I'm not replacing our ordinance, I just wanna make sure that this points out what is already in our ordinance.
No, I, I like that wording. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, this is the time and place for the bid opening for the Nemo Bridge Rehab Project. I'll turn it over to you, Mister Bay.
Okay, well, it looks like we got two bids, we also have a representative from Bros here to kind of go over these, to make sure everything is all right.
And John, there were two addendums to acknowledge as well, correct?
There is two, that is right, and what the addendums are is the, the one, the first addendum is, has to do with the removal and the, the leveling up of the existing pavement to the new bridge service. And the second addendum is just actually they, they left out the, in the first addendum, the place to put that pole, so. The first bid is from JV Bailey. Bid bond? Yes, there is a bid bond.
And you're looking to see if they acknowledge the addendums, right?
Looking to see if they acknowledge the addendum. They accept the conditions of the bid. And they do accept the provisions of the agreements.
Does that mean they accept?
And they don't, and they accept at both initials for the both addendums.
Okay.
And their bid total bid is five hundred and eighty nine thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
One more time, please.
Five, eight, nine, four, four, zero.
Okay, was there an engineer's estimate, T John?
There is.
It's at the bottom, three thirty eight.
And I have a breakdown of that if you guys want a breakdown of the engine testing. All right, second bid is from Core Construction in Hermosa. There is a bid bond. And the acknowledgement of both addendums. Agreement to all the conditions. And their bid is four hundred and twenty five thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety five cents. That's four, two, five, one, one, seven point nine five.
And Commissioners Dibbert and Flanagan, Bruce said that you probably don't have the engineer's estimate, which is three thirty eight on twelve point forty. You both here?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Here's our representative from Bros, he will, he will look these over real quick when we go on to some other things.
Well, you guys, takes some time to look those over, I guess.
Yeah, it is. Do you guys want to take on some of these, these?
Yep.
Prolegated elements?
I was gonna ask the gentleman there, are your bids, are other counties in that running over what you estimate or under, or pretty much the same? What's the deal? Most of them. Play that along.
Okay, John, what do you want to tackle first?
Uh, we can look at this Colorado Boulevard. It's, it's, this is at the Peaceful Pines, they've submitted application to bore in their water line, this is where they're, we've already, I think back in September, I think it was, we offered, we give them the permit with their approaches off of the St. Andro Road.
Now, this is the one that says at the top from NBL eighty five in Colorado, so they have two of them, but they've kind of denominated them differently. See the one that says?
Well, they're both in the exact same location, one is the, the permit to occupy the right of way, the other one is to bore the water line. It's all the same job, to bore the water line, under the same on, okay? Um, I have, you know, I, I, I recommend that we go through with this, but I did ask them, and this is where you got your two extra additions or the, the maps that I sent, I did ask them to extend their casing eight additional feet to the south of the St. Andro. They, they only had eight feet from the edge of the road to the end of the casing, I asked them to go a total of sixteen, so if we add a, a turning lane, I know this has been brought up in the past with the expansion out there, whether it's be the county or the city that takes us over for future expansion, I, you know, we all thought that there needs to be a turning lane there, and I think that that casing should be longer. They did agree to that, they sent me a, a revised map with reflecting what we asked them for an additional eight feet. So if they're willing to do that, I, I would recommend that we, we approve it, okay?
Did you put that in?
I did, I put that on this right here, the additional eight feet, so. It's in red.
So John, is this just a boring increment under consideration right now?
This is the boring permit and then the permit to occupy that right at that location, it's at the twelve hundred foot location.
We acting on both of these documents at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, they're really one thing, it's just the two separate documents, because it's a occupy, occupy permit and the boring. Both in the same.
And you recommend approval on both?
I do.
Okay.
I'll move it, we accept the supervisor's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll lose in favor of the motion, we'll say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Which one would you like to address next?
The Montana Dakota Utilities. This is the one that I just kind of read your clarification of our ordinance, I'd like to, again, I, I, this is to, uh, they're wanting to put a service line in from Colorado Boulevard, three thousand feet to the south on South Rainbow, on the east side of the road, it's a section line road, sixty six footer right of way. They got a lot of room there, it should be decent digging, I would think, so they should be able to get it far enough off the, the road. I have already talked to the gentleman in charge of that, uh, he was all about making sure they're as far off the road and as, as deep as they can be. I would like to say attach this clarification to our dimensions to it, and I would recommend that we approve that.
So, so did you send them a copy of that and say?
I have not, I talked to them on the phone, but I would like to send this with our, with the, with our acceptance of the, of their, their permit. I'd send this back to them at that time.
Mister Chairman, I would move to follow the recommendation and approve it with the special circumstance.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion? Seeing none, although in favor of the motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Our next one is for Black Hills Development, this is the Powderhouse Pass. And I just talked to these people yesterday afternoon, I was finally able to get through to them and they sent in a application, this is the one we talked about where they're gonna share the, the trench for their two water lines together. There's a lot of room where they're at, they've agreed that they could go off, further off the property, but they didn't submit a boring application, they didn't really want to bore under our road. They now say they will bore. At this time, they haven't, we haven't gotten the permit to bore, I would like to just push this one back until they recomplete this application and submit a different map that shows them further off the road, they have valves in our road and, and they're gonna be right on the edge, at this time, they said they can go further off and get these valve boxes and manhole covers, valve box covers further off the road. Otherwise, they're gonna be at that five foot off the edge of the road, and they're gonna be an obstruction for us.
Okay.
I wanna, I'd like to, I would like to push this one back until they resubmit and, and reflect.
That's good to me.
And then the second one is of the same company, um, they're doing the, they wanna put culverts in our road. And at the location where they wanna put culverts, they wanna, they're, they're proposing they got to build a retention pond on the opposite side of the Brownsville River.
And that detention pond, I mean, it's determined, does not currently exist, right?
It does not exist, and the retention pond is not in our right of way. But they do say that we have an existing eighteen inch by thirty two foot long pipe at this location. They say that that's not a big enough pipe to carry what they need to this retention. And that may or may not be, I don't, I don't know, I have never seen any of these drainage plans or anything. My biggest problem with this is, they, they want us, they want to put two twenty four inch pipes in our road. And in their plans, they show twenty, they're twenty four inch pipes and they're only twenty eight feet long, we currently have a thirty two foot long pipe in there, so I don't wanna narrow the road up. I talked to them yesterday afternoon about this, and they are willing to put in a wider pipe, if that's what it's required, but you guys are the only ones that can allow pipes in our road, you know, I mean, it's, it's kind of in your court.
Mister Chairman?
Commissioner Dibbert?
Well, I would suggest that we ask for a revised application showing the extensions of the pipes at the highway superintendent, make sure they're extended out in case we need to widen that road. I'm also very concerned about the open trenching, so I wanna make sure we have at least a two year warranty on this, uh, cause they can't jack dual pipes, so they'll open trench it, is that correct, John?
That is correct.
Yeah, and then I'd also like to see some language in there that they're responsible for the maintenance of the rip rap and all appurtenances to the pipe. Once they put this in our right of way and it has, needs maintenance, that shouldn't be on us. I, I see there's rip rap, rip rap on the south side, and there's some, some flared, flared end sections on the upstream side, so we wanna be very clear, this is their baby and not ours.
Okay, send them both back to the drawing board till things are corrected?
I think so.
Okay. March fourteenth.
John, if you need some assistance with that language, let me know, okay?
I will. I appreciate that, thank you. Um, and then the last meeting, we did our, our, our study, our application for our study, and I sent that in, and it was, it was brought to my attention by the auditor that we, you know, we did not put in a, a maximum amount of money, we put in the twenty percent, and she said that in the past we put some sort of maximum amount. I still have time to, to revise that if you guys want.
Is it twenty, is it twenty percent match right now, John?
Twenty percent, and that's what I put in the application, twenty percent match.
And that depends on what, if any are awarded, right? So the idea would be that you don't know what you're gonna get or how many, but you wanna let them know that you're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars, I'm making a number up.
So.
Hundred thousand last year?
It was two years ago.
We didn't do it last year. We didn't even apply, so. I, I would have time, if you guys want to put a dollar amount down there, I could have, I could, I could send that in, you know, I have to tell the first.
Mister Chairman, I would, Mister Chairman, I would move to put the value at fifty thousand dollars total. And so.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion?
Where does that money come from? Is that a budget or demo?
Yep, I just come on and. I'm just gonna ask if you, if you can afford, how much you can afford, Mister Commissioner Slate.
Before.
Right now, we got a lot of money. The end of the year might be different.
Before we vote on, I'd like him to tell us a little more about the, the four items that you guys checked for looking at this.
Okay, well, the four items are the items that you guys picked, I didn't really have anything in mind at the time. And lock them out here, I know we picked so the inner model of an area plan, I mean, if they decide to pick that, we'd be able to pick a, a designated location that you guys would like to study. And then, of course, the roadway standards, we just, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna integrate all these together, you know, we, we could, we could let them tell us if we need I guess, turning lanes, or if we're gonna need any, any expansion on roads as far as widths or anything like that for the, for the designated area. And as far as, you know, the management and, and the access for, for approaches and, and intersections and things like that, so. Those are kinda, I, I looked all of, as far as the DOT standards on these, these go, that, on these subjects, that's kinda how they spell them out, so.
These are four things that are over and above what you feel comfortable with doing yourself?
Well, I mean, you know, as far as taking the time to, to count cars on roads, I mean, we can certainly do that, but as far as trying to design any future development of an area, I mean, that might be a little above the Ivy Department's head. I wish I was smarter like that.
Well, I, it's double spending area, it can be if you know, know a little more about those.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's my.
I'd be willing to do whatever you guys want me to do, if you want us to take a little time and try to do some of these, you know, get some of this information. I put on, in the application that we have no current information to give, you know, as far as that, aside from traffic counts, we don't have a lot of that information. Or designing traffic patterns and things like that, we don't have anything.
Mister Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify my motion, it's a total of fifty thousand dollars, which the match would be twenty percent of the fifty thousand.
No, I'm not gonna second that.
Yeah, yeah, and then uh, the, I just wanted to be clear on the motion, and if we did get the grant, we don't have to take it.
That is correct.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I was, I was comfortable with just the twenty percent as he submitted originally, I, I can't support the fifty thousand myself.
Out of all the examples that they gave us, there wasn't any studies I think that will, I think everything was in that hundred, you know, hundred dollars into a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar range for total study costs.
But we do have to. Just for clarity, we do have to put a dollar amount in there for the total study, otherwise we don't know what the twenty percent match is, that's the way the application works.
It has a, it has a spot on the application for the total amount, and then it has an amount that we're willing to spend, amount of local funding available, or total amount of funding needed, or. So we could go either way, if you want us to go with the total amount, we could put a dollar amount in there, or the amount our twenty percent match. There's a place for both.
Give us your motion again, Randy.
My motion was for fifty thousand dollar total project cost with the twenty percent match being ten thousand dollars, so we'd be ten thousand out of pocket.
Chris, the form says, so you can, as Randy said, or as John referenced, that you can put a total amount of funding needed, but if you don't know, then you can say. then you can say, then if you do not have an estimate of the total amount of funding that such a study will cost, please list the maximum amount of local funding that will be available. So I would assume that that's probably what we're doing is for it to put in. Your maximum contribution would be fifty thousand dollars.
I think Randy's asking.
I'm sorry, I was.
So it says, please answer only one of the following. So you either do twenty percent of fifty or you do or a total, which would be ten instead of, sorry.
Read your motion again, Commissioner Dyber.
Fifty thousand dollars total with a twenty percent match. So effectively, it'd be ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll start it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for their discussion. We're gonna do a roll call vote. Everyone, everyone in favor will say aye.
Land again?
No.
Dyber?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Jennings?
No.
Hewing?
No.
Motion.
Okay, the motion failed.
I'll make a motion to do twenty percent, our twenty percent up to fifty thousand of whatever the total is.
Okay, I'll second that. Further discussion.
Twenty percent up to fifty thousand.
So that was our share would be fifty thousand? Is that the way the motion? Up to fifty thousand. Two fifty thousand would be our share? Yes.
That would be the twenty percent, fifty thousand.
We're just gonna put.
Okay, we have we have the motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So we're gonna do the amount of local funding available will be fifty thousand. So we won't do twenty percent then?
We're for maximum.
Is there one player on it?
Is that twenty percent of the fifty thousand or not?
It's the opposite of what we did last time. Our contribution would be fifty thousand dollars.
And keeping in mind, we do not have to take it if we did. Okay, correct?
That makes a difference.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna do roll call again. Everyone in favor of the motion will say aye.
Land again?
Aye.
Dyber?
Aye.
Lee? Jennings?
Aye.
Hewing?
Aye.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else on your plate there, John? Well, let's look at these bids real quick. There's no grant or no sharing involved. It's, it's anything over, we gotta pay. It's eighty, twenty up to three hundred and seventy thousand. That was what our grant was. So anything above that grant, we're gonna have to pay.
So you said we'll end up paying another fifty-four thousand if we, if we accept the lowest bid?
Yes.
Randy and Brandon, can you both hear that?
No.
We have a, just Rose, reiterate that point.
Yeah. Can you come up to the table where you're closer to the mic and speak a little louder?
I can tell you what it is right here.
Okay.
Our grant is for three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred dollars. The low bid is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents. And the difference is fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-five cents over the grant amount. So we're gonna have to pay that amount.
Randy?
Does, is there an additional charge for construction management?
Uh, not, that's, we get, we pay twenty percent of that as well. On, on rehab projects, that's an eighty, twenty match as well. On, on construction, it's a hundred percent we pay. We're only paying twenty percent of the, of the engineer's management. We've already got the, I mean, we've already got the amount of, you know, the, the, the grant amount.
Mr. Chairman, I don't remember. If this is awarded today, when could the project proceed?
Uh, that, I think the, there's, the starting on this was gonna be, uh, we don't really have a start date because that finish date, but I would assume they're gonna start probably in May on this.
I don't know if that makes a difference for your consideration, but the idea is that this would be a project, a shovel-ready project.
It's not gonna get any cheaper, that's for sure.
Mr. Chairman, based, Mr. Chairman, based on the need on this bridge, I would move to approve the lowest responsi- responsible bidder.
We have any irregularities? Operate the chairman to sign any necessary documents?
He's got his thumb up, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
This would be contingent on the DOT's, you know, acceptance of this as well.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. Everyone understand what we're voting on? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
There you are, opposed, Richard?
Yeah, roll call.
Roll call.
Land again?
Aye.
Dyber?
Aye.
Lee?
No.
Jennings?
Aye.
Hewing?
Aye.
Four one.
We gotta get some of these things done, so.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up question, if I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
It's for our, for our consultant. Since this is over a certain amount of the bid, does this have to be especially, or especially approved by the Transportation Commission?
No, we'll submit our bids and everything to the DOT and they'll give us a concurrent letter. So we're gonna look in minutes and, uh, grant the nation. We'll see if they can.
Thank you.
Okay, anything further, John?
That's it for me.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're right on schedule. Amber?
We have a little bit of transition time, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break here. We'll get it to you. Thanks.
Thanks for staying on top of all those and adding the different things that, we appreciate that.
Well, I do my best.
Think, what do you think, Bob?
Spending money.
Well, if, if, we're in a different era here.
Boy, we are.
That's a problem, all right. Realize that, that. I don't know, things aren't gonna change for a couple of years yet. If we get through another election, we might be in better ground.
Yeah, those bridges are expensive and all that. They're terribly cheap about a bridge, no?
Bob's right with the with that, Whitewood Bridge there, we've been doing that for I don't know how many years.
Yeah.
We've worked on that and still hasn't started.
The wheeling one?
Yeah.
Well, that's cool, so.
It's because of the crack and everything.
It's all done. They, they got their four oh four permits.
Did they?
They, they're ready to submit a per bid on that, so. They're talking about the end of April being able to bid that job and then starting. They didn't, again, they didn't put a start date, but they are putting a completion date of June of twenty-four on.
Oh, really?
That's what our meeting there last week. But they are, they're going ahead pretty quickly.
We wouldn't have to fund it till the following year though.
Yeah, that's not gonna get done.
But Bruce and Alan and I, we looked at that bridge, I don't know how many years ago. It's been a lot of years ago.
They said they have lookout for it, I mean, that too. I think it's thirteen years from the first application for a grant that I finally built. Takes forever.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Do you need any reset? Who's the bids?
I do, I do use that map if you wanna take them in the process and stuff.
Okay. Yep. Anytime, whenever, today sometime. Good enough.
Thanks, John.
Okay. We need to wait for this. All right. We'll come back to order. First order of business is a public hearing. The way we handle these is we'll probably have Amber tell us what's going on here, then we'll let the public weigh in on it, uh, for or against the, the project. And if you do, please stand up and state your name and address for the, for the record. So Amber, if you'd like to present it.
Um, Cindy is online. She was not able to be here today, but she is on there. This is the one asking for the application, and I believe you guys are here for this one as well, right? Okay, and, and then you guys are the ones that live out there, right? Okay, so this is like the property manager is here as well, so. Um, so in May of two thousand and five, the original horse camp was approved for, um, Lindgren's was the original owner of this. And it was approved. It's been operated consistently since that time. We really have, I think we've had one complaint over ten years. I mean, we haven't had much and they dealt with it right away. It was to do with some signage at the time. Um, the infrastructure is all in place. Basically, what Cindy is like, would like to do is they are asking to be able to build a secondary, a shop building with a little bit of living quarter in it. Um, they have a full-time manager who's here that lives in residence that's out there. And then they have the little rental cabins, but when Cindy and her husband come out, they're not, they have to use one of the rental cabins, which takes away from them being able to rent it out, so they'd like to be able to utilize the little shed or the whole barn with the living structure in it. And then from time to time, they may rent that out. So what they basically like to do is amend their conditions to allow that to be considered like another cabin out there. They'll still rent it, but they'll also utilize it for themselves. We did look at doing a second residence, um, guest house type thing, but they may wanna rent it out, so they thought it was better than just add it as an additional cabin to the existing additional use, but that's already out.
I think she's on.
Yep, she is.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to weigh in, one way or the other on this? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and offer to the board.
Mr. Chairman, how many rental cabins are there now?
I think there's three, is that right, Cindy? Amy? Four? Yeah. And those were all approved as part of the, you know, back in two thousand and five when Doug put it in.
Okay. What's your pleasure, honor?
I'll move, except for the rental, the other than whole one.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Flat again.
Um, I'd like to know what recommendation the planning and zoning was and if it did include the condition twenty-four.
Yep, it did. That was the condition that they, um, put together at the meeting. So number twenty-four is what they approved is exactly as worded. So basically, I think what they were trying to do, Brandon, is if for some reason, you know, later on, they are out here full-time, they would obviously move into the house and the, the building would become like another camp.
Okay, further discussion?
Is there a pretty big, uh, on the oval, the building is a pretty big area, but it's for horses and that, or is it mostly kept?
Um, can, can you speak up a little bit, Cindy? We have a hard time hearing you.
Yep, so they say like a, an area for the apartment, which has like a bedroom and a kitchen, a little living room, bathroom, and then the rest is all like for hay storage, farm equipment, that type of stuff.
Hay storage and farm equipment.
Hay storage and farm. So I would say, what, what would you say square footage? I didn't grab those plans. There's probably right at about a thousand, twelve hundred square feet, maybe?
Yeah, I know when you were originally talking about the guest house stuff, I was working with those rules so that it was just like a a smaller portion versus the house, so it's right in alignment with that.
Yeah, so our guest house. Thousand to twelve hundred ish. So the majority of it is whole building, like actual shop.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, so Cindy, it's been approved. Um, I do need a signature and/or an original document. Um, you probably can't see this, I'll do you want me to send it with Amy or do you wanna stop in? Or you should have had some stuff that you needed to sign in that original packet and get back to me.
Okay, well, if you send it with Amy, uh, my husband and I meet Thursday.
Okay.
Then you can sign it and just run it into town for you.
Perfect, okay.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Cindy. Let me see. Well, we need these back with their signatures, so this would have been in the very first package.
Yep.
Okay, can I just give, and then just have him sign it and just give it back to me? Okay, and you can email it too if you want. Yes, if you have your notices. Thank you. So you guys are good. The sign can be returned whenever you're in town. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thanks, Cindy. Yes.
I can bring that in later in the week.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Have a great week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye, thanks, Amy.
Time, I thought I had it somewhere.
All right, floor is yours.
All right, so the next one is just one plat. Um, Doug called last night and he is very sick. He apologized that he's not able to be here today. I don't know what's going on, but he just said he could not make it. So this is, what they're trying to do is plat off a parcel, a two-acre, two-point-two acre piece, um, which is for their son, I believe. And they own, well, it's forty-eight point two oh six and then two acres, so they're gonna keep the bigger part, which is where his house and barn and everything is, on forty-eight and then break off two acres um, to be able to give to his son. It is zone park forest, so it meets the density requirements if they want to. They're using, they're utilizing the existing access. Um, I think it's, well, what is it, Buckin?
Buckin Horse Lane.
Buckin Horse Lane, yeah. Um, it's existing access. That'll be the access that the son uses for his driveway, cuz it's the driveway that goes all the way up to the place anyways. So existing, um, nothing really changes, I guess, except for the fact that it's a two-acre piece. And I'm not sure basically why he chose that spot was to do with some drainage. So the way it worked, the best place to put it, I don't, it's kind of in an odd spot, but that's why he did it there.
Is it on the wedge on the back there?
Um, it's up on the map there. So it's this two-acre piece down below. Doug's house is way up top.
Oh, that's.
So it's like down closer to the road.
Okay.
Closer to the highway.
Thank you.
Um, did not need a fire plan on this one, just because it's all pretty much open hay ground. He keeps it maintained and, you know.
The boys back on the street so I can see them.
Yes.
So just so I understand this, um, is park four, CD's five acres for a house?
Uh, no, two acre minimum, five acre average. So we would look at the total average, so forty-eight, it's eight for forty. So with forty-eight acres, a little over, he has close to fifty.
Right.
You break it down by five, but you can. You break it down by five, but you can, we allow people to make smaller lots to keep some larger. So you can go down to two acres is the very minimum.
Okay, so how do we monitor that then? So just every time we have a building request in, you take a look at the total acres of the total number of houses or how does that?
Um, well, yeah, so the plat, that's why we require it to be platted. So the plat is gonna show, and I just always go back to the parent, I would say that,
Okay.
the parent piece to see how many lots are still, if that makes sense?
It does, yeah.
So that's why the legal descriptions are so important, because it, we always go backwards in the legal. What did it come out of, how many do we have left? Yep, and we check it every single time a plat's created. Um, building permit-wise, you have to have a legal description given.
Commissioner Diver, thank you.
Now that this, uh, road services three lots, do they need a road profile?
Um, at this point, it, I can't force it, because that other one's already there. It's an existing lot. The top one's an existing lot.
Okay.
That's up to you guys, I think you could, if you wanted to, but that's, that's your guys' call.
Further discussion or action?
I'll move, we approve the, uh, two-acre plat.
All seconded. Okay, we have a motion in a second, further discussion? Did you wave, Brandon? Are you swatting?
No, I keep bitching my forehead with my thumb, I'm sorry about that.
Alright, Commissioner Diver?
Is the motion for both preliminary and final?
It is.
Yeah, I think that's what I heard, yes.
Alright, I think we're done discussing. We have a motion, uh, for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Get my signature on here and then we'll.
Yep, was it a phone line?
Alright, that looks like that clears our board, do we have any items from the public?
Both of you.
You don't wanna say nothing? Giving you the whole floor. Alright. Items from the commissioners. Commissioner Diver?
I would just point out that this Thursday, March third, the, uh, Black Hills Association of County Commissioners and elected officials has their, uh, quarterly meeting, which is their annual meeting to install officers. Uh, it's in Dewey County at Timberlake at lunchtime. If you're not there, you may end up being an officer, so please come.
Well, unfortunately, I'll be at planning and zoning, sir.
Nope, you won't be, it's Friday.
What's Friday?
This meeting.
Oh.
We're leaving, we're leaving at, we're leaving at eight-thirty if you abide along.
No, I'm actually flying away that day, so.
Okay, well, excuse you.
Regarding committee reports, I would defer to Richard and/or Randy, the Natural Resources Committee did meet yesterday and they have another meeting set for next Friday, a week from this Friday at three o'clock. But if either of them would wanna give some kind of an update, Paul Pearson did make a presentation yesterday regarding the LiDAR data.
Okay, either one of you gentlemen wanna speak to that?
Well, I, I might say it was a very good meeting and Paul presented the, uh, maps of, uh, areas of two-forty acre, uh, pieces that the company, uh, used LiDAR on to come up with the, uh, tree spacing size and whatnot. Paul told us about those things and he recommended that we don't go any further right at this time. Alright, Bruce?
I think, I think that's fair, and there was a bill for twenty-nine thousand dollars that I think industry had agreed to pay, but, um, there was some discussion and there'll be more discussion, but, uh, my impression was is that, you as a commission did have a problem that that bill was submitted to be paid, uh, through, through you and then to be reimbursed by the industry, there might be some savings on sales tax and so forth if that happens. Ever officially what, what they wanna do, but that's, unless there's any objection, that might be what happens. So your next meeting on March fourteenth, you may have a bill for twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Commissioner Diver?
Well, I'll just add to Richard's statement. Uh, I think it's important that we share that information with the Forest Service, because they now have a RFP out through the USGS to do new LiDAR data of the entire forest. So if our results would influence their specification, we need to share that as soon as possible.
Okay, Chairman, Steve was not pressing yesterday, but Tom?
Matt.
Matt, Matt was here, and, and so I think Matt heard that and was gonna pass that on to his, his, uh, superiors, right? Then also, I think, um, Senator Diver commented on Senate Bill twenty-one as well.
If I may, Mister Chairman, two additional quick things, Senate Bill twenty-one, which is the, uh, Forest Service funding and, and FTE, uh, went through the Senate yesterday, it should be on the House floor today or tomorrow. It's, uh, agency bills, if we can get it to the governor's office, it would take effect immediately, which would give the counties five hundred thousand dollars in match funds. I'll also report that we have a interim forest supervisor. Mister Toback has, uh, has, uh, went on assignments, we have an interim supervisor right now too.
Okay. Anything, uh, Richard?
Randy, you went to the multiple youth coalition meeting, you told me, did they, uh, uh, decide any, anything there, the problem was the last time that they are losing members all the time and each of the, uh, participants and activities of Black Hills National Forest is, uh, supposed to be a member of the organization, but they're not, uh, showing up to the meetings, so that's making a lot of difference in how things are handled.
Maybe Commissioner Jennings, he was there representing his organization, could fill us in.
So we did talk about that, uh, it was on the agenda, we talked about how to stimulate some more interest in, in the groups. Uh, several ideas were lifted up, uh, perhaps having the groups, uh, present what, what their interest is at each meeting. Uh, or each take a meeting to present some of their interests and, and what they do, just to try to bring some people in. Uh, some talk about maybe having a social activity to try to grow up some interest. Um, also, social media presence and website, uh, so all those things are going to be looked into, uh, to try to, to get some more interest and, and more participation. Because that was, it was discussed there, that unless we're getting full participation from all of the disciplines, the coalition really is not effective.
No. And if I might, they, they might, uh, each of the organizations have some overlap there in different areas. And if they see that and start talking about the overlap, well, that may be bringing in more compensation from the whole body.
Okay, anything further to come before the board this morning?
Commissioner, I'm Bob or Brandon, if you're interested in, in going to the county convention, if you could let me know by next Wednesday, I'd appreciate it by the eighth of March, please. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, you are adjourned.
Thank you. I'm gonna shut off the recording.
Thanks.
Yeah, take care.
I was just trying to be polite.
There was a boss he said to me in the ball cap.
I always liked that option.